Good evening and welcome to the Oshkosh Area School District Board of Education regular meeting for Wednesday, March 10th, 2021. Has this meeting been properly noticed?
Yes, it has.
Would you please call the roll?
Evans?
Here.
Herzog?
Here.
Holmstead?
Here.
Heschel?
Present.
Salaji?
Here.
Harlan?
Here.
We have a form.
Thank you. The next item of business is the Pledge of Allegiance. Dr. Cartwright.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next, we will go on to Board and Administrative Reports. I'd like to make a number of, I'd like to start with a number of thank yous tonight and also recognize some very positive things going on in our district and our community. First of all, I'd like to thank the Oshkosh Area School District staff, food service, IT, custodial maintenance, secretarial, teachers, support staff and administration, and all other staff members within the district for supporting the five-day-a-week in-person learning with the COVID mitigating factors. We know, we all know this has been a very difficult year as we come upon the anniversary of year number one relative to closing down our state effectively, and I just want to recognize the efforts of all of these individuals for making sure that our students are safe and that we are attending to their educational needs, not only our staff but the parents and the community. The community in particular has done a great job over these last few weeks. If you follow the Winnebago County Health Department's weekly reports, and sometimes they come out more than once a week, it seems, because our district's case rate continues to remain lower than it has for many, many weeks, and so we have our community to thank for that. In addition, I want to thank Dr. Cartwright for the collaborative efforts that she's put forth over many weeks with UW Oshkosh, Aurora Medical, Hometown Pharmacy, and the Winnebago County Health Department to secure times for all OASD staff who wanted to be vaccinated in our part of the 1B group. This just, this wasn't an action that just happened. It took a lot of work on the part of Dr. Cartwright and our collaborating partners to make this happen so that we can continue to ensure the safety of students and staff. And if we can assure it in our staff, we can ensure it in our students. So, thank you, Dr. Cartwright, and our collaborating partners. I'd also like to recognize one of our very own students who was highlighted in the Wisconsin Association of School Boards' recent edition of the School News, a monthly publication. One of our students was recognized as a distinguished finalist in the, as a top Wisconsin Youth Volunteer of 2021. So, we extend congratulations to Liberty Mugirauer on this outstanding achievement. And of course, there was the Lourdes High School Boys Basketball Team. We can't, we can't let that one slip away either. So, we congratulate one of our sister institutions and the accomplishments of those students. Also want to give a shout out to the students who are out for winter sports as we are experiencing spring-like temperatures, so volleyball and basketball and all the other sports that are ongoing before we transition to spring sports. So, thank you to our athletes, our coaches, and our families. So, with that, I will move on to the next agenda item, which is the Superintendent's Report. Dr. Cartwright.
Thank you, Dr. Herzog. I'd also be remiss if I did not express my gratitude, share with the gratitude that you expressed to me as well as with Mr. Kammer, because he and I have been working in partnership
Thank you.
and establishing a lot of those conversations, and I greatly appreciate it. It has been conversations, quite frankly, that I started back in December and then brought Matt in with, Mr. Kammer, in with me with those conversations. He was the one who established the partnership with Hometown Pharmacy while I established the partnership with the remaining organization. So, I just want to let that be noted.
Give a shout out, too. Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The Oshkosh North High School Black Student Union, also known as the BSU, recently joined with the University of Wisconsin Oshkosh BSU for a day of mentorship, fellowship, and critical dialogue about the experiences of Black students in both high school and higher education. Students were able to set future goals and were paired up with college students to share one-on-one dialogue about accountability, responsibility, and respectability. The outlining, the outing ended with UW's BSU treating our students to more fun at Rev's Bowl with three games of bowling and a picnic-style buffet. And I just want to highlight that this is one of the accomplishments and one of the things that the district, as we continue with the work that we're doing with Equity, this is just a product of demonstrating some of the ways in which we are supporting our students, and we are very proud of our students for taking this proactive approach and having Students at Reed Elementary School read, spent the month of February focused on kindness. They participated in a kindness bingo challenge, wrote thank you notes to essential workers, and celebrated with a dress-up week. Community two students had voice and choice in choosing from seven ongoing projects. The past two weeks have been spent investigating issues and meeting with project partners. Projects included focusing on the importance of literature in our youth, volunteering, raising awareness, and identifying human trafficking locally, and honoring our veterans. Webster Stanley Elementary School recently held its second annual Read Your Heart Out event. Even though the event was virtual this year, students very much enjoyed it. They were able to listen to books read by community members, enjoy an interactive virtual drumming session, and participate in a bookmaking activity. Carl Trigger Elementary first-grade teacher Jen Cardinal was recently featured in the Scholaska website for her review of Stand Tall Molly Lou Mellon. The feature discussed how the book can be used during morning meeting, teacher character traits, and promoting student reflection. Additionally, two Carl Trigger students, Eli and Riley, offered student reviews of the book. Oshkosh West is pleased to announce that two students were selected for the 2021 Herb Cole Student Excellence Scholarship recipient. Liberty and Rebecca were chosen to receive this $10,000 award because of their exceptional scholarship, leadership, citizenship, and school and community involvement. Congratulations and job well done. And on the screen, you'll see just a few examples of where I've been spending my time lately. Of course, not listed on there are the multiple phone conversations related to COVID-19 and definitely with the vaccination distribution. So, without further ado, I will ask for Mr. Kammer to come up and provide us with an update related to COVID-19.
Good evening. So, I'm going to start my report like I always do, and that's going over the Winnebago County data summary, and Dr. Herzog, you touched on this a bit earlier, but the good news is the case rate in our area does continue to go down. And when you look at the geographical boundary of our school district, for the second week in a row, we're in a moderately high range with a case rate of 78.4. So, that's, that's the good news is that we're continuing to trend in the right direction. When you look at the individual grade levels, it seems to kind of be up and down across the board, but that's to be expected. For this past week, when you look at the high school level, we remained in the high category for burden status. At the middle school level, we were also in a high category. For elementary, the K-2 level, we were in the high category for the first time in a number of weeks. And then in the 3-5 category, we're in the moderately high category. Now, keep in mind that a difference of one or two cases sometimes can propel one of these groups from, you know, the moderately high level to high. So, keep that in mind if you're wondering why, you know, certain grade levels are high this week, where they may have been moderately high to low in previous weeks. In terms of PPE, we continue to distribute masks as the need arises. So far this school year, we've distributed over 35,000 masks to our schools, and that includes disposables and cloth masks, both child size and adult size. We continue to have a solid supply of masks here in the district. We have over 30,000 in stock and ready to go for schools that need them. So, we are already more child-sized masks, that's disposable masks, that seems to be the most popular type, and we just want to make sure we're fully stocked for the rest of this year, and if we need some going into next year, we have those ready to go as well. We've distributed 9,671 individual student barriers since the start of the year, and again, students are using those when they have their masks off for lunch or snack or other times throughout the day. And then in classrooms where it is extremely difficult to social distance, they can utilize those as well. And then we have additional PPE like medical masks, gloves, gowns, goggles, face shields, thermometers, and so on that are available for our health rooms or other staff who need them. In terms of vaccinations, I think it's already been said, but we really appreciate the efforts of Aurora, Hometown Pharmacy, UW Oshkosh, the Winnebago Health Department in helping us get our staff vaccinated. Along with Dr. Cartwright and I, both Katie Neiman and Paige Schmoody were very helpful in this process as well in getting things organized and communicated. So, I just wanted to make sure they were recognized for their efforts, too, but we were thrilled that we were able to get our entire staff completed the first week that they were eligible, and that included a lot of our substitute teachers, a lot of our coaches, after-school care workers, so it wasn't just OASD staff, but a lot of people who also work directly with our students. Just as a reminder, COVID-19 testing is still available at the UW Oshkosh Culver site for any staff, students, or community members who are interested. And then another reminder, our district dashboard continues to be updated on a regular basis. We typically update every Monday and Thursday. There were questions that came up because it didn't appear as though we updated it this past Thursday. We just forgot to change the date. The information was updated, though. So, as of today, we have 11 active cases in the district. Eight of those cases are students, three of them are staff, and they're located at eight different schools throughout the district. We currently have 455 students that are quarantined and 32 staff members. And since the start of the year, we've had 600 positive cases of students and staff members in our district, and we've had 6,745 students and staff members that have had to quarantine at some point. So, that concludes my report.
Any questions or comments from Board members?
I have one question. So, the Culver Family Center at UWO is all, is doing testing as well as vaccine distribution. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, good. I just, I wanted to clarify that so people weren't confused when they, we said that you could, we still have testing there, and it's the same site. So, thank you, Matt.
Sure.
Anyone else? Thank you, Mr. Kammer. Appreciate your report.
Thank you, Matt.
We have also prepared for you tonight an oral report related to the 2021-22 school year and open enrollment with Dr. Gunlock.
Good evening, everybody. I'm doing an oral report, but I can't really talk unless I have a slide deck. So, you know, I put a few things on the slide that would kind of organize some of our comments today. We wanted to talk a little bit about a upcoming 21-22 school year survey that parents are going to see. You know, the one thing that we've gotten, and you've heard here, people sitting at this very table, time and again, have said, "How can we help?" You know, would they realize that the district is in a tight spot, and how can parents help? Well, I have a really easy way for you as a parent to be able to help us. We're going to have a survey that's going to come out starting Friday. You're going to get a couple of weeks to take the survey. It's very simple, very easy. Please take the survey because we're going to be using that survey data for some very important things that I'm going to highlight here in a second. The survey's going to go out, as I said, March 12th through the 26th. It's going to ask about what your current plans or intentions are for the next school year. It's going to ask, are you planning to remain at your current school, attend another school? Are you going to open enroll? How is this all going to play out? Now, this is going to become very helpful for us. There is a link to a separate E-Academy preference survey at the very tail end. The one thing we, the reason we put it right at the very end after the thank you page is we don't want people to confuse these two things. These are two separate things, but we like to try and keep things as simple as we can. The survey will be sent out to families starting March 12th and close at the end of the day on March 26th, and then that survey data is going to be available for principals, secretaries in our buildings, et cetera, so that they can start some of the staffing and planning. Obviously, it's going to be used heavily with us here at Central Office. This is not to be confused with our online registration process. That's a little bit separate. It's coming in a month or so. That is a separate thing. This is for us to begin planning so that we can create a staffing plan for the 21-22 school year. Now, this is an actual screenshot of what the survey's going to look like. It's going to come from Infinite Campus. One of the really cool features of Infinite Campus is it has a built-in survey tool that we can, we can distribute it just to the families we want. We have some families that have already taken this. They're not going to get the survey because we've already got the data. It's going to go right to the people who need to see it. The other thing that's kind of cool, and this is just me being geeky a little bit, is we get to actually take a look at it, how it's going to look on a desktop, and then it'll also show us how it's going to look in every other venue, just like our website. Our website's built mobile-first, so if you're using a mobile phone, an Android phone, a tablet, a computer, doesn't matter, we're able to see how that survey's going to look for all of you, and it puts it all together so nicely. A couple of things we had as far as did you know, I'm not sure everybody knew that we can deliver these IC surveys right to the people who need to see them. That also works for reminders. So, if somebody forgets after the first week, we intend to send a reminder out. We're not going to give a reminder to somebody who's already done their homework. You know, they've already filled out the survey, it's already completed. This will just go to folks who haven't had the time to fill it out yet. The survey will provide the district with critical data to allow us to staff our buildings. That is one of the most difficult things for us to do, is to ensure that we are properly staffing and not overstaffing and not understaffing. So, the more accurate the data is we get from our parents, the more accurate our staffing plan is, and the more cost-effective it is, as well as being able to meet everybody's needs. Survey will properly help us staff the OASD E-Academy for next year as well. We're not entirely sure what the E-Academy preference will be going forward. We're very pleased that we have a K-12 E-Academy now. We didn't anticipate pre-COVID, we probably wouldn't have, but we do now, and that's, that's awesome. It works really good. We just need to know who wants to take advantage of that as well as our in-person learning. Our out-of-attendance process, we'll use this data to honor parent preferences for schools. This is all part of our staffing process, as I'm sure many of you've heard before. We have a lot of parents, about 500 or so, who do out-of-attendance area requests. They request a school that is not their home attendance area school within the Oshkosh Area School District. We say yes to about 90% of those, in some cases, 95%. So, we'll be using this to maximize parent choice and minimize any involuntary transfers. We do plan to contact families who are open enrolled out with information on our E-Academy and our in-person offering and why the Oshkosh Area School District is a great choice. I would say the best choice, but you know, that's just me. So, that's my oral report. Any questions?
So, we're sending this out to the parents. We got the communication last week about what our plan is for the fall.
Yes.
Are they going to get a reminder of that? Because I think it's important before they take this that they know what our plan is or what we're going to try to do in the fall.
We're going to reference that plan.
Okay.
But yeah, we, that's why we sent that communication out last week so that people, because you're right, people would say, "Well, I'd like to know what your plan is before I go ahead and answer that." So, we did this very intentionally. Here's the plan. Now, what's your preference? And then we'll go ahead and make sure we're able to accommodate your needs.
Excellent. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions, comments from the Board? Thank you, Dr. Gunlock.
You're welcome.
Next, we move on to Board Committee Reports. I believe we have at least three from Education, Legislative, and Policy and Governance. I don't know who would like to go first, but...
Policy and Governance is not shared enough yet.
Okay.
So, we'll be bringing that on the 21st.
Excellent. Very good. Mr. Evans, how about you?
Well, alphabetically.
Well, your name is alphabetically.
I do feel like I always go first. Education.
But her committee is, is alphabetically first, so.
Yes. So, we met about a week ago, the Educational Committee, to discuss our reading curriculum. Sorry, let me get myself together. So, the people in attendance were Dr. Kim Brown, Julie Conrad, Lisa Duxbury, and Deb Darling. They, there were more people in attendance, but they were the presenters, I guess is how I should have phrased that. We talked about universal instruction and how that's guided by the standards. That's what the teacher would give to the whole class. And then we talked about the multi-level system of support, which means providing equitable services, practices, and resources to every student based upon their needs and the instruction and the interventions that they might need. And this is for reading, writing, phonics, and word study. So, those four core areas are covered daily through different instruction, like whole groups, small groups, or even one-on-one learning time. We looked at the data from our assessments that we give in those areas in reading, writing, phonics, and word study. Students in grades kindergarten through second grade participate in the phonological awareness literacy screener, or known as PALs, and they take that two to three times a year. And that's a develop, and that's one tool that we use to monitor progress. The other one at that grade level is the developmental reading assessment, which is the DRA, and that helps allow teachers to monitor students' reading abilities and if they are continuing to grow or if they need some other sorts of instructions or interventions. Students in grades three through five are assessed using the iReady reading and math tools. Six through eight also receive the iReady reading assessments three times a year. Students in grade nine through 10 received fast bridge reading assessments three times a year, and students in grades nine to 11 also take the forward exam for English Language Arts. I believe the eighth graders and also three through five take forward as well. Is that correct? Students in grade 11 take the ACT test. So, you can see that there was a lot of data that we went over from the results of these assessments, and we had some discussion about which of these assessments tie to our standards, which ones focus more on, say, a skill like reading versus the phonological awareness. We looked at, at the kindergarten level, the data results from the PALs on letter identification rates, and we've seen how over the years, that first assessment in the fall, when our students first come to us, has continually gone down. But what was interesting is the end-of-year result has stayed pretty steadily. So, our teachers are closing that gap from where our students show up at the beginning of the year. Currently, the DRA benchmark shows that there have been losses between 2019 and 2020, but the losses are not as bad as anticipated. A lot of the charts we did look at, you notice kind of like a drop and then an up. Predicting that'll be there for, you know, usually when we look at charts, it's like five years back, so there's always going to be this one year. We'll remember that was the COVID year. And of course, that also made it so the last year, the spring assessments didn't all get to be completed. So, there was also the catch of not knowing exactly where our students ended last year. So, we talked about the intensity of interventions that are provided by the literacy teachers in small group or one-on-one instruction, where they're able to provide students specifically with what they need. At the secondary level, the structure's a little different because there are specific courses that students can take to meet their interventions. It would be like during an elective hour, so they'd still take their English Language Arts class, and then they would also have a, a class that offers extra support for their English skills, for their reading, writing, phonics, and what was the other one? I listed them at the beginning, and word study skills. We talked about the forward exam and how it does not include just a reading-only assessment. It assesses critical thinking skills and writing, and it doesn't directly correlate to the standard. So, my experience as a teacher is when I'd give these assessments, or if I were to look at these assessments, I would try to see what standards my students needed, and we talked about how the DRA doesn't give us that information for teachers to go back and say, "Okay, I know I need to do better at this standard." I feel like I'm a broken record. You may have noticed the last couple of years that I've been on the Board, I always say that would really frustrate me as a teacher. But I don't know how we fix that because that's a state exam, right? So, looking forward, new ELA standards for grades K through 12 are on the horizon. It sounds like more of a consolidation with teacher input throughout the state about which standards, how they might be tweaked a little, or which ones are of the greatest value. So, currently, the plans for rollout and implementation are underway for that. Phase one includes getting to know and learning the new standards, which will be adopted in October of 2021. So, about half a year away. And then this summer, they will start developing curriculum for, new curriculum for the secondary level and realigning our current curriculum for, at the elementary level, to make sure it is prepared for those standards changes. We did, at the end of the meeting, have some additional questions related to literacy because we talked a lot about the assessment and the data, but we wanted to see the data broken into subgroups. We wanted to discuss a little bit more about the writing, since that wasn't discussed as heavily. So, committee members were to forward their questions for the next meeting to the presenter so that they can properly prepare for when we revisit our literacy curriculum in April. And that meeting will be on the 7th, which is a Wednesday. We had to change our regular time because of spring break, so that's on a Wednesday, April 7th, at 8:30 in this room.
Thank you, Mrs. Salaji.
You're welcome.
All right, then moving on to the Legislative Committee Reports.
Yes. The Legislative Committee meeting met on Thursday, February 25th, at 8:30 in the morning. What we, the bulk of the meeting dealt with the Governor's proposed two-year budget, which was released a week before, and how this works is Governor releases his budget. Usually, the Budget Committee at the Assembly and Senate level disregard it completely and then write their own budget, and then they have to come together and hammer out something that's agreeable to both sides. But some of the highlights of the Governor's proposed two-year budget is a total K-12 increase of $1.65 billion over the biennium, general aid increase of $612.8 million to school districts across the biennium, special education increase of $709 million over the biennium, revenue limits increased per pupil adjustments to $202,21, $202,22, $202,23. Low revenue ceiling, set low revenue adjustments at $10,250 and, for 21-22, and $10,500 for 22-23. Per pupil aid, set the per pupil aid payment at $750 per pupil in each year and provides an additional $75 per economically disadvantaged student. Student count allowed districts to use the greater of the 2019-20 or 2021 pupil counts for revenue limits. English learners provided $28 million increase over the biennium. School mental health categorical aid increased by $46.5 million over the next two years. School-based mental health collaboration grants increased grant funding by $3.5 million annually. And early learning allowed districts to count full-day 4K students as 1.0 FTE for general aid and revenue limit purposes. It'd be great if that would just be signed as the budget and we could move on from that, but it will be, you know, it's going to take, this, we foresee this is going to take a long, long time, perhaps even beyond September when school starts up again. We'll still be probably discussing this. The committee discussed how their board-approved focus related closely to several items included in the Governor's proposed budget. This being a lengthy budget, as I just said, it's going to be a lengthy negotiating process. I brought this meeting in just at the one-hour mark. We were, we adjourned at 9:30, and our next meeting is going to be on March 25th at 8:30 in the morning.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Are there any other Board Committee Reports this evening? All right, then let's move on to the non-agenda related public forum. As soon as I find my paperwork here. All right, so when I call your name, I would invite you to come to the table. Please clearly state your name and address. If you are acting as a spokesperson for a particular group of individuals, please indicate the group that you represent. And we also ask that you limit your comments to the time allotted, which is three minutes. We ask that you use public comments rather than a question-answer dialogue and state clearly and concisely the matters of concern. Please remember that the use of specific names of district personnel may lead to legal liability. In such instances, please pursue the district's formal complaint process process by contacting the superintendent's office at 424-0160 to direct you to the appropriate administrator. So with that, we will begin with Gregory Egner.
Okay. Gregory Egner, 911 Greenwood Court. Well, Board, I want to compliment you on finding a way to make it work to get people in the stands for our winter sporting events. So it's great to watch the games and see people there. And so I, as I stated at the previous meeting, we are Oshkosh, and we found a way to make it work. And I really knew you could do that, and I'm glad you did. So, okay. Now, the next thing I want to talk about is the, we talked about staffing at the, overstaffing and understaffing at the previous meeting. I think as far as the office staff at the Recreation Department, I think you can go with one director, one program supervisor, and one secretary. And I think the Rec Department, it's been that way for about 40 years now. Because I used to work for the department, so I know from previous experience that it's been that way for at least 1980. So, but I really think you can trim it down by two there, because the programs are a little less now than they used to be. And, you know, I really think that that can be done. So, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you for your time, Mr. Egner.
You're welcome.
Next, no, oh, I'm sorry.
I got it.
Thank you, Mr. Wright.
No problem.
Okay, our next person to sign up tonight is Jamie Johnson.
Jamie Johnson, 1018 Ranway Street. As I watched the last school board meeting, I was thrilled to hear, as a district, we really want to be grounded in conscious discipline. I've been an elementary teacher for 25 years and truly believe this decision will have a positive impact for students. Conscious discipline is an evidence-based, trauma-informed approach that increases connections between adults and children. As was explained at that meeting, adults learn tools to remain calm and manage our own emotions in order to give students the support they need. Staff members choose to see the best in others and understand that mistakes are opportunities to learn. Conscious discipline uses routines and structures to build community and relationships. This brings children to a place of willingness to learn because their sense of belonging in their school family. We know that an atmosphere where students feel safe and cared for is the optimal learning environment. A board member asked this question about PBIS. Are we still using that? How does that fit in with conscious discipline? The answer given was, they actually complement each other really well. I respectfully disagree. There are some components of PBIS in common with conscious discipline. Both are consistent and predictable. Students are taught clear expectations of behavior, and there are school-wide routines. The commonalities end there. According to the PBIS website, quote, "School staff members regularly recognize and praise students for good behavior. They may also use small rewards like tokens or prizes to recognize when students meet the expectations," unquote. Tickets, paw prints, et cetera, are doled out by adults, and students use them to buy trinkets and privileges. There is much research showing that external motivators are not only ineffective, but counterproductive. PBIS also has acknowledgement programs that leave many students feeling less valued than their classmates. When one child is chosen for a monthly recognition, for example, there are 20 others feeling as though they don't measure up. Kids do well if they can. There is a reason a child has challenging behavior. Why would anyone not want to do well? Don't all of us do the best we can in the circumstances we find ourselves in? I believe that if kids could do well, they would do well. We need to figure out what the lagging skill is. What is the obstacle? We need to ask the child what is getting in their way, so we can help and support them. I am so happy to hear that the Oshkosh Area School District elementary teachers are going to be trained in conscious discipline. I would also ask administrators to consider keeping the positive aspects of PBIS, for example, the teaching of expectations, but removing the use of external rewards. I would like to make the school board and administrators aware of two resources as the district moves forward in this positive direction. Lost at School by Ross Green, and Beyond Behaviors by Mona Delhook. If there is a possibility to have a parent representative on the team of people doing this work, I would like to be considered as a member. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Are you going?
Chris Wright.
Excuse me. I wasn't sure if you were coming to clean the table like we have.
Oh, no, no.
We like, we like to have people wait until they're called. But, thank you. I know it's a little confusing, so I apologize.
Oh, it's fine, completely. Chris Wright, 1425 Russett Lane, Oshkosh, Wisconsin. And I just came here today because I wanted to publicly thank all of the teachers and principals for all of the work that they have been doing to keep our kids in school. I have noticed a tremendous difference in my child and in all the children that I coach, and their families that I interact with. Everything just seems to be better. And I know that that took a lot of work. I was fortunate enough yesterday to visit, and I have been fortunate enough to visit with a lot of teachers and principals and people throughout the whole district. And I'm just very grateful for what they've all done to help get our children into a better place. Because I certainly know that it's been tough on them this whole year, switching from model to model. There's been a lot of negativity and adversity throughout the community. And it's been, it's been very hard on them. So I look forward to having those bridges gapped. I think that we can make tremendous strides in the near future to bring the community together and to bring those students back that we lost. So I'm just here to say thank you. And thank you for giving me some time to speak.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Wright. All right. I believe the next agenda item is Agenda-Related Public Forum, and I don't believe anyone signed up for that. So our next workshop, or our next agenda item is a workshop, Strategic Plan Review of Goal Number Three, Priority Area Two, with Dr. Pinkston. Good evening.
Again, as Dr. Harazov mentioned, I will be providing an update on Strategic Plan 3.0, update on Goal Three, Priority Area Two. Just a quick review of the goals that are contained within the strategic plan. Goal One, improve student learning for all to ensure college, career, and community-ready graduates. Goal Two, operational efficiency. Goal Three, dedicated and high-performing team members. Goal Four, safe learning and working environment. And Goal Five, sustain and strengthen community Plan duration and design. I know this has been covered by my colleagues who have come up to report on the goals that they are responsible for. And again, I will be talking about Goal Three, dedicated and high-performing team members. Goal Three, Priority One, is improving retention rates for our staff. Goal Three, Priority Two, again, which I will be reviewing this evening, is increasing diversity through recruitment strategies. Goal Three, Priority Three, cultivate a culture of health and wellness. And Goal Three, Priority Four, invest in staff. Observable impact data that will be used will be staff demographic data, student demographic data, staff diversity recruiting data, how many staff that we are recruiting who are from a diverse background, and our ability to retain those staff members. I wanted to be able to share with the Board this evening three years of demographic data, highlighting our student demographic data as well as our staff demographic data. As you can see, there is a bit of a disconnect between our staff and the students and families that we serve, which is why our recruitment strategies are so very important, not only to increasing the diversity among our staff, but of course, it aligns with our equity work as a district as well. The focus to increase diversity through recruitment strategies includes the development and implementation of a comprehensive recruitment plan, with a specific emphasis on increasing the diversity within the OASD staff. I wanted to share a bit about the why. Why it's important that we have staff who mirror the students and families that we serve. The phrase mirrors and windows was initially introduced by Emily Style for the National Seed Project. A mirror is a story that reflects your own culture and helps you build your identity. This enables our students to be able to look across our district at staff who look like them, who have similar backgrounds, similar stories, who perhaps have faced similar challenges, and provide positive role models and hope that if they can be successful, I too can be successful. A window is a resource that offers a view into someone else's experience. Students learn about themselves by learning about others. So not only is it important for our students of color to see folks who look like them, it's important for all of our students to see people in diverse back, from diverse backgrounds in leadership roles. All of our students benefit from having a diverse staff working with them. Some of the benefits of having teachers of color in our schools. Teachers of color serve as positive role models. Research suggests that a teacher workforce that closely mirrors the racial makeup of the student population being served, again, benefits all of our students. Students who have access to teachers who reflect their own race and ethnic background experience benefits such as higher rates of academic achievement, attendance, and graduation rates. Again, I felt it was important this evening to share the why, the story behind why this work is so important. Recruitment strategies currently being utilized includes attendance at educational job fairs at universities with a significant minority student body, establishing partnerships with historically black colleges and universities, the development of recruitment materials designed to highlight features of Oshkosh and Wisconsin to appeal to minority candidates, and to organize and publicize joint job fairs with local governmental entities and businesses. I've had an opportunity to attend job fairs, both in person prior to the onset of the pandemic, and now virtually. Some of the schools that I've had an opportunity to visit include the University of Central Florida, Florida A&amp;M University. I recently participated in the UW Milwaukee Virtual Diversity Career Fair, Howard University, Bethune-Cookman University, and of course, schools within the Wisconsin system as well, which include UWO, the University of Milwaukee, and other universities within our university system. Establishing partnerships with historically black colleges and universities. It's important to establish a rapport with the career placement offices on campuses so that they can help me connect with students on the campus. Because of course, when they hear the Oshkosh Area School District, many times, students from out of state have not heard of our community and our school district. And so again, that's why it benefits us as a district to establish those relationships with staff within the career placement offices, so that they afford me an opportunity to meet with students in a smaller setting, and again, help get the word out about how wonderful our school district is and our community. Many times when you participate in career fairs, students just traditionally think of school districts as just providing opportunities to be teachers. But there are a wealth of other opportunities within school districts, as I've had listed here, in the fields of health science, social work, and psychology. Because, of course, we have vacancies in those areas, as well as our instructional positions as well. It's important to develop recruiting materials designed to highlight features of Oshkosh and Wisconsin in order to appeal to minority candidates. And one of the ways that I have done that is working with Ms. Katie Niemann to devise publications, again, designed to specifically focus on the recruitment of minority candidates. It's important to be able to convey to these young people the opportunity to be the difference. You know, it's one thing to go to a district and just kind of blend in and be one of many. But what I tout to candidates that I speak with is truly, they have an opportunity to be the difference for not only the students of color in our schools, but all of our students. To be a true change agent, to help students see their own potential, to help them realize that there are no challenges and no obstacles that they cannot overcome, and to foster a sense of pride, not only in our students of color, but again, all students. And why choose Oshkosh? As this is my third year here in Oshkosh, and I made the transition here, it's important that I be able to share with others what the benefits are of becoming a part of the fabric in our community. Activities that are on the water, sports, parks, the ability to be able to hike, shopping, and also, of course, pre-COVID, the plethora of music activities that are available during the summer. One of the things that I'm most proud of being a part of our school district, when I talk to any candidate about why they should join the Oshkosh Area School District family, is the tremendous investment that we make in our teachers in order for them to be successful. The professional development that we offer. Because the more effective instructional leaders that they are in their classrooms, that equates directly to the success of our students. So things such as the New Teacher Academy, an opportunity for collaboration. I stress the fact that as instructional leaders, gone are the days when you can close the door and act as an independent agent. We expect our teachers to be able to work collaboratively. The instructional support teachers who provide The instructional support teachers who provide support to our new teachers, being able to come in and model best practices to help with behaviors. So they're not alone. They are going to receive a tremendous amount of support when they join our school district. Organize and publicize joint job fairs with local governmental entities and businesses. It is important for our school district to work collaboratively with other key community stakeholders to attract and retain a diverse workforce. A prime example of that taking place was just last evening, we participated and sponsored the Oshkosh Community Equity Ally Academy. This is a direct offshoot of our equity work as a district. This was an opportunity for us to partner not only with parents in our community, but other key stakeholders in our community. Again, it's an extension of the equity work that we have undergone. And one of the comments that I heard in my breakout group as well as comments that have been shared with us through the Equity and Diversity Advisory Committee is the fact that our families feel very passionately about the need to have a diverse workforce for our students. And in partnering with other entities within our government and within our community, this gives us an opportunity to make sure that as a community, we are creating a welcoming, supportive environment for those of other ethnic backgrounds who choose to become a part of our community. It can't just be an initiative of the Oshkosh Area School District. It has to be all of us working collaboratively to create the kind of community that will benefit not only our students, but our community as a whole.
Thank you, Dr. Pinkston. That was very eye-opening and very thorough. Questions or comments for Dr. Pinkston?
Yeah, I have maybe one, and that might lead to more. I don't know. But is the question able to be answered of, "I would love to apply at Oshkosh, but..."
I think in the candidates that I have spoken with, probably their biggest concern is the weather. Now, being hashtagged "snow princess," it's not a problem for me. But they, they want to know, you know, how do you, you know, coming from, you know, if they're coming from the south, how do you deal with that kind of cold? And I say, "It's very easy. You layer up." And when, you know, down home, when it's in the heat of the day and, you know, 90, 100 degrees, you aren't outside. You're in the air conditioning. If it's very cold, you're inside. But again, just having an opportunity, Mr. Evans, to tout things that they might not get to do in a different part of the country, such as being able to ski or snowshoe or again, or hike. And again, I am, you know, just kind of the spokesmodel for snow. It's beautiful. So I am all about that. They might also ask, "What about licensure?" And my staff do a great job of working with all of our candidates. You know, if they're coming out of state to work and see if there's reciprocity that's involved, or walking them through the DPI process, because that can sometimes be very daunting coming from out of state. Candidates also ask, "What's the community like? Am I going to be able to fit in?" And again, that's why it's so important that we, as a community, help to create and foster that climate where they will feel accepted and welcomed and not simply tolerated. So those are kind of some of the questions that I have been asked, if that addresses your question.
We do have that one week and like, maybe about a week in September. It's just beautiful.
And maybe another one in the spring.
I think Mrs. Salaji was next, and then Mrs. Carlin.
Yes. You know, as someone who is from out of state, you guys need to brag more about your summers.
Yeah.
Summer in Wisconsin is like the most beautiful experience. I've lived in four different places. So that's another thing to highlight. But that wasn't on my notes. I wanted to thank you for the pamphlet. I think that that is just awesome. I zoomed in on the "Why Choose Oshkosh?" part, and it's just so exciting to see all of those rankings, you know, in the top 10 cities for working parents. I totally agree with that as a working parent. Top 10 most livable small cities, one of the best college towns, it's just, and then the museums and the parks, I just, that brought a lot of joy to me to see us highlighted in that way because we are such a good community. And I also wanted to thank you for making this a community effort, because I agree that the best way to make this work is to have the whole community, you know, working together on our diversity and equity work. And I know that there are some people in the community who maybe aren't quite there with us yet in understanding why this is so important. So I just really wanted to highlight that point in the slide where you talked about that students who see themselves represented in the workforce where they attend school have higher rates of academic achievement and higher rates of attendance and higher graduation rates. For me, that is the reason for doing this. And the research does bear that out. I know that as an educator, I know that as an educator that worked in an all-black school as a white woman, that that's just true. Our students need to see themselves represented in our workforce, and the reason that we're doing that is for student outcomes. I just thought it was important to echo how you said that, because I'm just really passionate about that, the student outcome, and that the purpose for this work is to improve our student outcomes. And I totally agree that it helps my students, you know? It helps, I have mostly daughters, it helps my daughters to see male teachers in their elementary school, and it helps my son. He came home the other day bragging about how he got to play football with his male teacher, you know? It's important for our kids to see a diverse group of leaders in their school buildings. So thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Mrs. Carlin?
I just wanted to congratulate you on this presentation. I think it was a really important presentation, and I think you did a great job. And as Liz was saying, she kind of stole my thought, but as she, Liz was saying, I think it's really important that we educate the community about the benefits of having teachers of color in our school district. And I thought you did a really good job doing that. And so my question for you is how, as a board, can we help fulfill this objective? What can we do to help us become more diverse?
I think you've already begun that journey, Ms. Carlin, simply by making this a priority for this board, by making sure that it is included as a part of our strategic plan. Because as we all know, what we value, we pay attention to, and we monitor. And I think the more we can work collaboratively with other key stakeholders within our community is key. And just helping to get the word out, and again, forging those partnerships. I've had some conversations with folk at the city and the county, specifically about hosting those joint job fairs, because we don't just want to corner the collegiate market. We want to go after veterans who are looking for a second career, or anyone else who is looking for that second career, and couples who are looking to relocate. Perhaps one spouse could secure a job within the school district, but what about the other spouse or partner? Because again, that's what it's going to take. We need to be able to market ourselves as a community that is welcoming and inclusive of all. And again, that takes all of us speaking the same language and rowing in the same direction and having the same purpose and mission.
That's awesome. Thank you. There was one thing I was wondering about during your presentation. I've attended a number of meetings outside the district involving other school districts where the focus was on finding essentially high school students to help address the teacher shortage that, that many, many talk about. And they typically use the phrase "growing your own." Have, I'm wondering if we could reach out to some of our, our students of color, as was shown earlier in some of your, your data, and the 7.6% of our Asians, 7.6% of our school population who are of Asian descent are in the 7.3% black and the 6.6% Hispanic. Could we reach out to those? And I don't know if it's a Future Teachers of America model or whatever, but is there a way that we could develop interest among our high school students in a teaching career or other careers in the, in the community? To, to kind of, I don't want to say target, but encourage students in those, in those groups to consider teaching as a career or some other aspect of the educational enterprise, whether that's IT or, or something else?
That is certainly, Dr. Herzog, a very viable option, and it is something that we're looking into. I think it's also important, as Dr. Cartwright mentioned in her Superintendent's Good News Report, about having that partnership between diverse groups at the university partner with our students. And again, forging those partnerships and establishing that relationship. But you are correct, many students do have an opportunity in other districts to be a part of a "grow your own" program, and that is definitely something that we will be pursuing as well.
Very good. I know that, I mean, the concept of growing your own, if you, if you're, if you are looking at encouraging freshmen, it's going to take at least four years to maintain that interest through high school and then another four years in college. So it seems like this could be a multifaceted approach. So you, you look to grow your own, but you also go into the pipeline where students from many different districts have come, or colleges and universities, who are near the end of the, the training program to attract them into the system. So I, I see a possibility for multiple approaches to this.
And it is a matter, Dr. Herzog, of planting that seed, and it's not necessarily a seed that will grow instantly, but you're making that investment, and the outcome will be seen later.
Other questions or comments? I, I have to say that I've, I've been enjoying these recent updates on our strategic plan and the progress that we're making and being open and transparent about the fact that we have not reached 100% of the goal or the priority area, but we are making progress. And I think that's very important for the Board as well as the community to see. So I thank you for your report tonight and other staff members who in more recent weeks have been making similar reports. So I, I'm going to look forward to the, your update on this one and to future reports on other areas. So thank you very much, Dr. Pinkston.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Do we have any requests for future agenda items? Are there any announcements at this time? Then I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Carlin?
Aye.
Evans?
Aye.
Herzog?
Aye.
Olsted?
Aye.
Castle?
Aye.
Salaji?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned.
Thank you, everyone.